Good morning. It's 8:30, July 23rd, 2024. I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for today to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
A motion to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens here who wish to speak to the commission on any item not on today's agenda? Steve, we got anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
I'll second.
A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval minutes from June 9th and June 6th, or I'm sorry, July 9th and July 16th, 2024.
I'll move to approve the minutes from July 9th and 16th.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda, we've got James O'Donnell, Director of West Central Regional Juvenile Center, with a request for approval, hire a juvenile detention worker.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I'm here to request a rehire of an open position that we have in our non-secure unit for a juvenile detention worker. The position's in our 2024 budget and is necessary for quality programming.
Any questions for James? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second the motion, and with a clarification, is there need for backfill?
It doesn't hurt, thank you.
That would be included in my motion.
Same in my second.
Okay. A motion to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, James. Then we have Josh Swanson from the Juvenile Detention Center with a request approval to accept the GTAC quote for body worn cameras for the West Central Regional Juvenile Center.
Thank you, good morning. After discussion and approval from both our Minnesota DOC licenser and our Juvenile Center Advisory Board this spring, we began researching body worn camera systems for use in our secured detention facility. I received two quotes from two different companies that service our area. The quotes came within $700 of each other. Both are under the $125,000 earmark, the Juvenile Center Advisory Board earmarked for the project. The Axon system came in at $117,700. The GTAC system came in at $118,300. Both bids include the purchase of cameras, hardware, training, licensing software, cloud storage. I had the opportunity to get some hands-on experience with both of these systems, thanks to the Cass County Sheriff's Office and the Clay County Jail. This allowed me to experience both the functionality and capabilities of both systems. While both systems were excellent and very similarly priced, we found some subtle differences making the GTAC system to be the most suitable for our juvenile detention setting. Additionally, the Clay County Sheriff's Office uses the GTAC system, and our Clay County IT department is familiar with it. With that said, we are requesting permission to accept the GTAC system quote for $118,395.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, thank you. Just for the board's information, the $125,000 that West Central had earmarked for this was basically off of the over $1 million in excess revenues over expenditures from 2023. So, and then the remaining balance not used for the body worn cameras is to help offset costs in the 2025 budget. So, so we're able to keep rates down for 2025 as well, based on those revenues over expenditures from 2023 and purchasing these body worn cameras. Just wanted to make that a point of clarification.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravenoff.
Yeah, just a question. Tell me a little bit about a five-year contract. What does that entail, and what does it mean?
So, the bid before us is a five-year bid. At year six, it's basically, we continue on, should we choose to, with the cloud storage. And so, right now, the cloud storage price is $15,000 a year. And so, in five years, so we locked in, with this, with this quote, the cloud storage is locked in every year for five years.
Maybe I was just, you explained part of it, and it's your cloud, I get that. And then, does that include the equipment?
Yep, we own the, we own all the equipment and software.
Yeah.
So, after, actually after year one, you know, year one is, is, we purchased, everything is owned, I should say. And then, at year one, the cloud fee is the only remaining fee, unless we decide to purchase new equipment. But, equipment is owned, it's not leased.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
And then, training is involved in that year one, where we won't be offered an extensive training by the GTAC personnel after year one.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
The warranty will be five years on the equipment?
Yes, sir.
And on producing video and redaction and all of that stuff, is that handled by our IT people?
That's handled by us at the juvenile facility.
Great, they're gonna, they're gonna train people to do that.
Correct, yep.
I don't think redactions, well, may be a big issue in a juvenile facility, I don't know. But that, that is a time-consuming part in, in law enforcement end of it, when you, when you have to produce those videos and have in-house talent, and that's going to be important. Any other questions?
I do have one other question.
Commissioner Campbell.
Josh, can you tell me, or tell us, of the $118,000, whatever that amount is, how much of it is actually the purchase price of the equipment?
I can, I'm...
And maybe it's here, and I'm...
It's, yep, the, the equipment, the equipment purchase is around $38,000.
Okay.
For the cameras, for the charging stations, and things like that.
The reason, I was just, I was just wondering if that was something that we wanted to incorporate into an internal service fund for, when it comes time to have those replaced. And it's something that, maybe that can be a discussion that you can have, James, with Lori, and see if, if that should be done. You know, I, I think it's, when you, when you look at each piece of equipment individually, it's not that expensive, but if you're drafting to replace all $38,000, it might be worthwhile to have an internal service fund item set up for that.
Just another thought, I don't want to get in the weeds, electeds do not need to tell department directors what their policies are, but if you got clear policies on use of this for your staff, to where you know, you know, just basically make sure the equipment's turned on when, when it's needed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we got the policies and procedures from two facilities, Hanipin and Ramsey currently use it, but the DOC, and we're going to start with their policies. refer to the county attorney's office if we have any other questions, but we're going to start with those policies, because they've been established and in place in Minnesota for a year, so.
I knew you'd have a good answer, thank you.
You might want to even, you might want to even see what the Clay County facility is doing in terms of policy, too.
I was just curious, follow-up, thanks for the question on learning about the equipment, just curious, what is considered useful life for body cams? Is it unknown, or expect...
Can you repeat that one more time?
I was just curious what the expected life of a camera is.
Oh.
If it doesn't get beat up.
If it doesn't get beat up, well, we've, I've been told that we shouldn't have to purchase a new camera unless we wanted an upgrade at some point in the future. So, from what I've been told, they are fairly indestructible, and I had some demonstrations at both Clay and Cass County, and heard stories about how the cameras are used and beat up and things like that, and they haven't had to replace one.
Okay, thanks. They're durable.
Yeah.
My experience with them is that you keep them as long as they're under warranty, and they're usually functional while they're right up to that point, which sounds like it's five years, which why ask? And they'll usually give you some kind of consideration on a trade-in, when it comes time for replacement at that end. So, they actually have more value, if you're anticipating another three years without warranty, they have more value just transitioning in something that's going to be under warranty for five more years. But, that, that's kind of what, because you don't want to wait until it breaks and you don't have video when you need it. So, that's, that's sort of what the procedures are with law enforcement anyway. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move the five-year contract with GTAC for body worn cameras for the West Central Juvenile Center.
I'll second.
A motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same, opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, I have them here, I just, maybe as, I was going to give a committee report a little bit later, too, on our most recent West Central meeting, and I just, I wanted to just give a thank you to Josh and, and James for adding to our agenda some discussion about our future plans that could potentially involve non-secure. And, and so, we, we had a discussion with the, with our members about some of the issues that are going on there, but also the impacts that the change in law will have regarding not, not being able to allow 10 to 12-year-olds in our secure facility, starting in 2026, I believe it is. So, that's going to have an impact on, on all of our members, not just Clay County, but all of our members, in terms of where will those, where will those kids go. And so, in that process, we did talk about, you know, some of the, some of our plans, if the PTR, PRTF were to work out in the location that non-secure is now, that we'd have to do something else, and then, in, in that plan, we would take care of that issue in a, whatever facility we would go to. And so, in talking with them, we said, we're, you know, if that happens, if that works out, we're going to, we'll be trying to include those. And then, we, we did put a, kind of an olive branch out to them, to see if there would be any interest on their part to partake in anything new that might come up, if they'd be interested in partnering on that portion of a facility that could handle that age group of kids. And I think we were talking about 5% of your non-secure population is, or of the secure population, is those five, 10 to 12-year-olds. You know, so, so there is going to be some sort of a need moving forward, and I, and we brought our members into that discussion, just for the sake of planning, if we're going to be planning something new, and if they want to be involved, we let them know that they should let us know, so that we can plan accordingly, so. I just want to, and I, so I wanted to just mention that, and thank you both for, for your time involved, and, and having that discussion, and it was a good dialogue, and, by the way, I think all our member counties gave a thank you to you guys for, for those plans, and, and the updated information regarding the new law. So, hats off to you guys.
Yeah, I don't think we could get a consensus, everybody's got to go back to their own body, but I saw a lot of nods and a lot of interest when you, you were presenting that to them, and it just speaks to the, to the quality of the facility that you gentlemen have run, and the experience that all member counties have had with, with the resources that are provided there, so, thank you. You do great work, you really do.
Thank you.
Next up's Joe. Fit up and advertise to rent 918 Ninth Street North.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Board members. Yeah, so, as you know, we did purchase that, that house up in the corner there, 918 Ninth Street North, and then we also have one else right next to it, 922. I guess, I have requests to fit up and rent this, but maybe we should take a discussion here on some of the options. Took a look at the place with the city Morehead inspectors, they went through the place, we got kind of a minimalist, if we wanted to rent it, so it is definitely a rentable place. It, it, I threw in there around $5,000, that would cover, half of that's probably going towards some sort of vinyl carpet replacement to make it rentable that way. They felt we could rent it for $1,500 a month. Would have to definitely check out and see if that's, you know, what the market is, but that's what I would start out with. But, there really is a couple other options if, that we were looking at, too, if you demo it, obviously, that'd be money upfront that we would have to come up with, and then, or we just hold on to it. So, there really, there's some options here to talk about, I just felt that throughout the renting, if that's what you would wish to do. So, maybe some feedback from you guys?
Commissioner Campbell.
Joe, I, you know, my, my only, my only concern from the renting standpoint would be how we would structure a lease and for how long.
Yeah.
You know, I think that, to me, I think that would be an important component on, you know, if, if, if we're able to proceed and move things along with some of these other things, with the PRTF and those types of things, and they move fast, which is wishful thinking, I think, but, but if, if that were to happen, then we wouldn't want that lease standing in the way.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think right off the top, we'd probably start out with just a one-year lease, maybe a month, a month after that. The 922 lease has two years left on it, I believe, I think, is what he has, so, not saying that this picks up, we would have to figure that out, too, but, but yeah, no, I wouldn't get into a long-term, I, I, you know, we could go six months, too, I'm not sure if somebody would commit to that for high dollar, but certainly wouldn't go past a year, if you guys would want to go that route, so, so that, you know.
Commissioner Kravenoff.
Yeah, to that point, I, I'm just speaking back quickly here, but yeah, I would agree. I don't think I'd go any longer, I think your idea of a year and month-to-month makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
How would you, part of it is, what kind of tenant you end up with, and what's happening inside the property? And then, I know you have lots of experience, but I mean, is there, you're pretty decent on it, foundation and windows, you know, those major improvement pieces?
Yes, yeah, everything's in decent shape. Is it 10 years? Probably no, but I know for two, three, four years out, we're, we're definitely good on all this, so earnest.
Yeah, and that's where I go back to the year leases, right?
Yep.
You know, I mean, that gives a lot of flexibility, not only for other uses, but also do we want to continue renting it when major improvements come up.
Yeah, and Commissioner Kravenoff, to, to answer your second question, we would probably, we would put in a, a background check requirement, too, for this, just because it's close to campus, and that would be a kind of requirement to, to rent, so we know who we're dealing with.
Well, the one positive thing, I, I think for me, it gives opportunity to not take away housing, you know, where I, I think that's important.
Yep.
And with that in mind, you know, from my point of view, I'd be open to that leasing.
Yeah, if, if you went the demo route, you know, we're looking at 20, 30 grand, could go up to 40, not quite sure, and with underground work and stuff, not sure what that lot does, but, and holding on to it, you know, you'd, you'd take everything down to the minimal power usage and everything, I mean, you're still four, 5,000 to, you know, keep it up and whatever, too, you have to keep the power on, because there's a sun pump in there that needs to run, but, so yeah, those are your, your three options. If you did rent for 1,500, just say 1,500, you got, you know, roughly 18,000 a year. And so, talking with Lori, we would implement that house kind of in our general 01 budget, courthouse budget, so at the end of the year, you would see, you'd see that revenue on the top, and then expenses down below, so it kind of a, so if this is done right, and we were able to rent it for close to that, you know, our payback would, would probably be, if I started September 1st, we'd have it all done by the first of the year, and as far as the payback, so 2025, you'd probably start making money on the house. But, I, if you wish to go that way, I would, I would first structure a lease, and then advertise, and then I would come back to board with the lease, and, you know, talk with the building committee, too, in between there, and just do that, so.
Well, just, as, as Commissioner Kravenoff indicated, we have a, affordable housing shortage in this community.
Yep, yep.
And even if it's just for a year, I would hate to see residents go to waste when it could be out there in the market, paying for itself, knock on wood, and allowing somebody a decent residence, so.
Yep.
And it may go a lot longer than a year, we don't know, but.
Yeah.
We have great plans, and we'd like to see them happen quick, but I don't see it happening in less than a year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to fit up, advertise, and rent the 918 Ninth Street North property.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion?
And I, you know, I guess I, I'm, I'm hoping that we can keep that fit up to that number that you talked about, or less.
Yes.
I, I know in your, in your memo to our building committee, you had mentioned something about in there, about having to upgrade the fire system in there.
Yeah, that's not...
Smoke detectors, isn't it?
Yeah, that's not as heavy-duty as, as it sounds, it's basically replace all the smoke detectors.
Okay, yeah.
There's, there's a little work in some electrical, there's some switches that are not working real well, and so, so there's a little bit electrical in some windows, and putting in some, you know, vinyl flooring, I think was what we'll do, and it's the cheapest.
Well, that was a, an option to cover.
Yeah, no, I, I like, I like.
Probably a cleaner option to maintain for renters.
Absolutely. And then, as far as that, there's a little bit of, it's only a one bathroom tub in there, so we would add a little shower head, so tech, so it's a shower, because people like a shower, it's more rentable that way, so that's pretty cheap, too, but when you add up all the little things, you know, I, I, it'll probably come under that 5,000, but wanted that, at least something to cover it, but, so.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
All right, I'll be back with the lease, then, at some point.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep.
And next up, we have, we have it listed as interviews, but we have one appointment, reappointment for the Buffalo River watershed district board, and we have one candidate with us here today, William Davis. If you would, just have a seat, and if, and make sure your green light's on, we are not going to interview you, because you are the only candidate, and we know you're qualified. But if you, anything you'd like to say, or tell us about your background or your plans, we'd be happy to listen.
Well, I guess the biggest thing is, I've enjoyed it, it's interesting.
If you would turn your mic on there.
Just bring it closer to you.
Oh, just bring it closer.
And I guess I'd like to go for another three years, and I guess in the next thing, I'd say, I would invite you guys, I think you all got an email for the tour they're going to have in July, or in August coming up. Last year, we went south, this year, we're going north. So, this year, it's going to be around Glendon, and then, north of, let's see, Stony Creek, right, north of, just north of Barnesville, like east of Glendon, which is, runs on the east side of Glendon, of course, to the river, it's out to Highway 9. And they're going to come up to Stony Creek, or Snakey Creek, and I believe that's the one up here on the Catholic cemetery to the river. So, it's kind of nice to see things going on in Clay County. Then there, just put on the EAW for the southern part of the river, Buffalo River, and Whiskey Creek tributaries, which should be right down around County Road 2 down there, that crosses the highway, it's in that area there, so we're going to go there, too, so. I know last year, Frank was, was there, it'd be nice to, and I know there's a concern with the quorum with too many of you people, but together, but it would be, you know, it would be an opportunity to see what's going on at the watershed in Clay County.
Bill, I don't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot here, but do you, could you, do you have any updates for us on the work that's going on around, I think, because I think the Buffalo Red was going to handle the Comstock project and the Georgetown project for the diversion project?
They're still working on both of those.
Okay.
It's, it's always, they're still working with the diversion board.
Okay.
About, and, and I think it's with the state, too, to work for the highway.
Yep, the road race?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's kind of been, that's kind of what the discussion has been, there's a discussion now and then about updates on it, but that's, seems to be what's on both ends.
You haven't, you haven't seen anything that's red flagged or anything like that, that where there's concerns about, or that...
No, they're going to, it was something about running the ditch to the south side of Comstock down there, but that's about all this, and then that's just up here, just what they're, that's what it is, is they're working with the...
Yeah.
They got to work with so many boards.
Right.
It seems like that's the questions, usually.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Kravenoff.
Just a comment, Bill, I've always enjoyed being on committees with you, and, and, you know, I've, I've come to most of your meetings and watched you all operate, and I just applaud your strong voice to the board, I think you, you're a great asset to it. The other thing that I really appreciated with you and Kurt coming on the board, I think, for Clay County, you've really added a, a good mix, where it seems like the board is, in my view, operating very well together, and I think, a lot of, I see a lot of consensus, and, and yet, when something is needing to be debated a little deeper, you have a strong voice that advocates for us very well.
Yeah, maybe sometimes too strong, but...
Well, that's all right. Anyway, thank you.
At this point, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill, again, for your service, it's really been a pleasure to see how you have contributed to the county with your diligence in projects, and when there are items on the agenda, whether it was the planning commission, your time on the planning commission or the watershed, I will say that you've always been the member that is out evaluating, observing before the discussion, so I really do appreciate that. You've always been so very well-prepared to everything that you lend your time to, so thanks again for your willingness to serve for another, another term. With that, I'll make a motion, if, if available, to reappoint Bill Davis to another term on the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board.
Second.
A motion to second, any further discussion? I just want to say, with the, with the, with the strong response you're getting from members of this commission, I think it reflects on the work you've done in the past, and we're grateful, we need more citizens out there that'll come forward and contribute their knowledge and their energy to making things work, and you are one of those, and we're grateful for that. Having said that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I hope to see any of you on that.
And we can advertise it, too, if it works with everyone's schedule, we can certainly advertise it, so thank you for that.
Just a thought, it's, because it is like all Clay County's.
Right.
Next up, Dan Farnsworth, MetroCog transportation planner on the MetroCog Heartland Trail study update. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. Thanks for the introduction, again, Dan Farnsworth here with MetroCog, and Ben Griffith here also from MetroCog. I'll just give a brief presentation on the Heartland Trail study in Clay County, thought it might be something of interest to you, and then we can also give you a little funding update with this as well. So, I'll get started here. Just a little background of the Heartland Trail in Clay County, I think a lot of you are familiar with it, but I'll just do a brief update on that in case. The Heartland Trail, the, the first... update on that in case. The Heartland Trail, the first segment of the Heartland Trail began in Park Rapids to Walker, Minnesota. And that was constructed in 1976. It was Rails to Trails program. So it used to be a rail bed, then converted into a trail. And then in 2002, extension of that got constructed from Walker to Cass Lake. So with this extension, it's about 49 miles of trail, and it's a paved 10-foot wide shared use path used by bikers, runners, walkers. Also, snowmobiles are allowed in the winter along this trail. In 2006, the Minnesota Legislature authorized the extension of the trail from Park Rapids all the way to Moorhead here. So we're looking at about 90 miles there. And so that started some planning efforts to the west of Park Rapids. In 2014, a, we call it the Clay County Heartland Trail Task Force was created. MetroCog led that. And it was, it really started from advocates within the city of Holly who had really started before that. And so we kind of took that and expanded it into the whole county of Clay County. Meanwhile, in Becker County, there'd been some trail work and planning done there. Their trail work is a little more advanced than ours was. And so in 2021, there's a ribbon cutting of a six-mile segment of the trail from Detroit Lakes to just west of Fraser. And then with ongoing interest in the Heartland Trail in Clay County, there was a study put together, a consultant-led study, $250,000 study that we just kicked off. And we call it the Clay County, excuse me, the Heartland Trail Study in Clay County. And so we'll go over that a little bit, too. And we have, we had various jurisdictions who put in the local match for this study. And so we appreciate that. And we'll talk about that toward the end. Just kicking off the study here, it started in January of this year. We wanted to start it as soon as we could. And so we have SRF as the consulting firm, and they partnered with Mend and Alta for this study. And a little timeline of the study, you can see where we're at right now. We've just gone into the alignment analysis phase of the study. And after that, we'll go into cost estimating, implementation plan, and start to button up the study. We anticipate the study to be complete around March of 2025. I'll just go to some input that we heard from the public. This was what we're calling Phase One of the public engagement. What we did is we started with the planning efforts that started back in 2014, 2015, when this task force got created. And we use those alignments. It was kind of one preliminary alignment that was being discussed at the time. So we started with that, brought it forward to the public, and we had them provide comments. So this was a public comment map that was online for about two months, starting in mid-May. And you can see all the comments that people dropped, some being, you know, I have concern about this particular route, or here's an idea, or I like this section of the route. So you can kind of see that dotted line. And then that more solid swath of land, which is about four miles wide, that is the study area. I know it's hard to see with it including the whole county. But we got 57 contributions on the map and quite a few surveys that were done as well. Meanwhile, we also had three stakeholder meetings, and I believe two of, at least one of you were involved in that. So these stakeholder meetings, we wanted to hear from elected officials from the different jurisdictions. We heard from the snowmobiles club, snowmobile clubs from the Buffalo Red, I guess we had someone from the Buffalo Red Watershed District on there, the MSUM Science Center, townships. So we had representation from all those and wanted to hear from them as well. So those meetings were in May, May 23. Now, we're at the second phase. And you can see here, once again, it might be a little hard to see, but we're looking at the western half of Clay County. Buffalo River State Park is there on the right in the green. Moorhead is in Dilworth or to the left side. And then Glendon is right there in the middle. From the comments that we heard earlier from the public, we developed routes that were more accommodating to those comments, in addition to a route that was, is solely public right-of-way. And so we realized that there's going to be no eminent domain as part of this study. And so we want to also have options for just one that's solely public right-of-way. So in that case, it would be a lot of Highway 10. That's the orange route. You'll see a blue route in there, too. And that's another option, using 12th Avenue South as some of that. And then the green route as well, which that one overlaps and is quite a bit on 12th Avenue South. So not a whole lot of right-of-way to use for this. And we didn't want to be going straight through landowners' property because we realized that it's more or less a no-go on that. So anyway, we are looking for comments on that. We had a public open house in Glendon last Tuesday, and we had about 30 people attend. That was really good to see that. And you might have seen an article from the forum that got published just the other day, also summarizing that. We do also have the same activities that we had at the meeting online right now. So at the end of this presentation, I might go ahead and just have these little cards passed out. You'll have a QR code on the back and a website if you wanted to look into that. You can see this alignment broken down into something a little more easy to see. And you can also provide comments. We do have the public comment period going technically till the end of tomorrow, but I think we'll probably be extending it a little bit longer, just because there's interest in continuing to provide comments on this phase. So with that, that kind of concludes the update of the, the Heartland Trail. There's a lot more to update you on. I don't want to really take too much time. I just want to also give you an update on the funding, in case you're curious how that was put together. And it was put together probably a year and a half ago or so. And at that time, the funding was broken into two years, 2024 and 2025. We have, I'll just go over the funding splits here. So once again, the, this study here, $250,000. 80% of that, which is $200,000, is federal funding. So we're able to use that for this study. And then the local match requires a 20% local match. So you can see the partners who have been involved with the local match. And so Clay County, we're planning, the ultimate goal would be $25,000 local match. Moorhead, $7,000. Dilworth, $6,000. Glendon, $6,000. Then Partnership for Health, $6,000 as well. So we appreciate Clay County's contribution in this, which is half of the local match. I'll go to the next slide, just give you an update on that. We invoiced Clay County for the local match for 24, which was half that amount of 25,000. So you can see 12,500. And so that was taken care of. And the plan was to do 12,500 in local match in 2025 also. But because of the pace of the project, we don't want to have to put the project on hold because of, with our funding source, if, if we don't have the funding in hand, we would have to put it on hold once we hit like 50% completion, unfortunately. I know it's a bit confusing here. Usually, we, whenever we do a study, we invoice the local jurisdictions, the full amount at the beginning, and that's taken care of. And we don't run into this. The only reason for this is there was another funding source that we were anticipating in '25, which was the whole reason for the two-year split with this. So anyway, what, one thing we are requesting, just want to run it by the commission here, to see if it's possible to request a part of that '25 funding this year. And then in '25, it'd be reduced to 6,250. So I think that concludes what I have. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, as serve on MetroCog, and so I have updated the board on, on how tricky it is sometimes to realign projects due to federal funds and local matches and, and certainly the ability to leverage those funds. You need to come up with the local match. I believe, is it Commissioner Gross that's on the Heartland Trail Committee?
Commissioner Gross and I.
And Commissioner Ebinger. So we do have three of us that are very well in tune with the happenings of this project. I believe it was Commissioner Wayland a long time ago that said, "The diversion will be well said and done, completed by the time the Heartland Trail gets going," just because of the technicalities that have to come with this. And so because of the local conversations that are happening regarding the, the Heartland Trail, I really do think expediting that additional amount, not, that doesn't include or change our cap. We're still committed to the cap of what our contribution would be. But I really think it would be challenging for the public to understand why we're having so many conversations and now all of a sudden it seems paused. And so I, I would support a premature, if you will, request on the other components. I think it's important for us to pause and reflect on how many of us that have gotten our vehicles, driven to Dorset or Walker, and stopped and unloaded our bikes and biked in those counties. We're talking about an ability to have something in Clay County that folks travel to Clay County, fill up their gas tanks to get to in Clay County. And it really is an economic development component, particularly because there is a state park right there. And that's not part of your discussion, that's part of our discussion. But as we contemplate good use of Clay County funds, this certainly checks all the boxes for me. So thank you for the update.
I had the opportunity to attend the meeting in May. And that was my first time up, but I got a good briefing from Grant Wayland on his, he gave me some good input. And Frank was, was a wonderful source of information. He was, he was updating all of us during the meeting. What I came away with is there's three options on this that are thoughtful and are well planned. There's also going to be a price tag on this. It's going to be pretty extensive. And to do that, you're going to need state and federal funding. And to get state and federal funding, they don't do anything without a comprehensive study that's current and touches all the bases. So I think the request for this amount, simply to keep, keep the wheels turning on the study and prepare us to go out and find funding that can complete the project, is certainly reasonable. So I, I am supportive of this. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Dan, the, earlier in your presentation, you talked about, and I believe it was in 2006, the Minnesota Legislature authorized the trail from Park Rapids to Moorhead. And I, and then we had some discussion where now there's a portion of that trail that's been, and I drive by it every time I go to my lake place from Fraser to DL. So, and is this, is this supposed to all be contiguous? So, so from, coming from Park Rapids, is that going to Fraser? Is that, is that the plan there? And then, so that's, so it's not going to follow 34 and?
Right. Yeah, we've been working with the Becker County folks. It's a different group planning that. Right now, they're looking at ideally going through the Smoky Hills, as they call it over there, from Park Rapids to Osage, and then kind of working your way down. So we don't know for sure, but that's what, that's their next phase that they're planning.
Okay. And I do know that, you know, that segment that's from Fraser to DL, it does kind of follow Highway 10.
It does. Yeah, it kind of veers off a little bit here and there. So about 50%, 60% of it is right along Highway 10. Others are a little further back. And then, yeah, I should say that there's a little segment there getting right into the heart of Fraser, probably a mile and a half, that they still have to complete. And they're working pretty hard on that, just running into some landowner resistance or just trying to figure out the best route there.
Sure. Yeah, I was just curious about that. I would have thought the natural way to go from Park Rapids would have been just to come, going all the way down 34 and instead of cutting down to Fraser. But.
And some of it comes down also to even the, the will of the different communities along. Every community wants it to come through. So Fraser was a huge proponent of the trail.
And as Commissioner Ebinger said, you know, and I, again, I think in order to do the construction of this, which is, would require a lot of federal and state, you know, you have to have the good study. And I'm assuming, I'm assuming that a significant portion of this would come out of the state's, what is it, the, what do they call that fund?
Oh, the Greater Minnesota Trails Group Fund.
Well, yeah, it's all, it's all part of that three, three ACE or whatever, present sales tax that we all pay on an annual basis.
Legacy?
Legacy fund.
Legacy.
Legacy fund. Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Right. I think a lot of it, at least working with the folks there in Becker County, a lot of theirs came through Minnesota Bonding Funding. And I'm not sure if, if it was a state trail, which this is proposed to be, I'm not sure if we can use the legacy fund for that. And so in that case, we'd probably go with the bonding bill route, which has been successful for the Detroit Lakes to Fraser section.
Okay.
Commissioner Krabinoff?
Just thank you, Dan, for the update. And a couple of things I was wondering, the source of, you kind of ended with needing the money because there was another source of funding. Did that go away or?
Yeah, it was a certain source of funding that's called the complete streets funding. It's used for bicycle pedestrian type studies. And so we, we felt like, instead of having to maybe, Ben might be able to speak a little more to it, but instead of having to maybe split it between two, two different projects, there was another project that seemed like a better candidate for it. It's a lot of, lot of red tape, I guess you could say, with that funding source. So we wanted to, then that could have maybe slowed this project down, too. Either way, I think there was a decision to go with a different, to not use complete streets funding for this in 2025. I'm not sure if you want to add anything else to that, Ben?
I'll just add that part of the reason that that funding, that funding wasn't available, our oversight agency is North Dakota DOT. And for three years, they kind of kicked around what to do with the complete streets funding that they receive through the U.S. Department of Transportation. And they finally came up with a formula, how to divide that up amongst the four MPOs in the state of North Dakota. That wasn't decided until late last year. So as we, as we plan our budgeting and our program, you know, develop our programs, we weren't sure, one, how much it was going to be or when it was going to be available. Like I said, it came about in October, November of last year. And because of the complicated, you know, the strings that are attached to that, the, the recommendation was to try to use that on a single, on a single project. And we, we had, the timing of it worked out. We had a project that was coming online that could utilize that. Now, after this year, we know what the annual amount should be, and we're working to develop what that can, what that funding can be used for. We think we've come up with something, and we'll be presenting that as part of our work program development for '25 and '26, which really, you know, is coming, coming together, which y'all, I say y'all, the policy board members will be seeing here in the, in the near future. So we think we figured something out. And again, the program was partly in flux, but a lot of the criteria about how that funding could be used and what it could be used for was still in the development phase. So all those loose ends have kind of been wrapped up now. And the state of North Dakota DOT has figured out what their criteria is for, for us in the MPO world to move forward and how to utilize that. So just kind of a missed, you know, we were a little bit of a missed opportunity there. It would have been nice because that funding does not require a local match. However, there's a lot of other strings attached to it that we have to make sure that we cover.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with requests. But then the last thing is just curiosity. And of the three plans that you showed, now, are you far enough to have a feeling from the public which route or you're way, are you really in this?
Well.
As advice, I want to know.
Right. I think the one, just based on the meeting there last Tuesday, it sounds like people are not super excited about going along Highway 10, especially for the majority of the route. So I'm trying to recall if that was a blue route or the, the green route. It might have been the blue route that they're more excited about.
Obviously. Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. This might not be a question that you can answer, just as I'm sitting here thinking. Several years ago, when Governor Dayton implemented the buffer strip initiative, is there an ability to construct said trail on that buffer strip? Certainly, as we talk public right-of-way and in the public, that, that would be easy. I'm, you know, Matt Jacobson's here from planning and zoning, kind of looking at me like, probably not.
You're referring to the buffer strip of the waters, 200 some, from the waterways? Yeah, we looked into that. And we are working with Buffalo Red Watershed District to see what options are. It sounds, just with our consulting firm there, they said, you know, at the end of the day, it sounds like that might run to a lot of resistance. Also, another concern that our consultant had, who's done a lot of trails, is just the, the flooding potential in, the topography and the flooding and just the logistics of trying to meet the ADA compliance on some of these. Might be some steep slopes and maybe some soil issues as well. So, but I think between that and also the landowner concerns there might be pretty tough. And maybe Matt also agrees. I'm not sure. Okay. So, but we'll continue to talk with Buffalo Red Watershed District and see what might be feasible, because there's a ditch or two out there, too, that could be options.
Right.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that, based on the way the request is stating here, I guess I would like to make a motion to authorize an additional $6,250 for fiscal year 2024 for the project. Because originally, we had already approved the $12,500. I just, so we would be doing an additional $62,500, $6,250 this year, and then next year's request would move down to $6,250. So, that would be my motion.
Motion second, any further discussion?
And I do notice that Matt was excited that that was going to come out of his budget, so.
I don't believe that was part of the motion, but...
Well, he gave a thumbs up, so.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor, the motion say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
If I might, real quick, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. While these two gentlemen are here, I think it's important to note that not only as a commissioner and as my alternate, does Commissioner Krasenoff join me sometimes at the Policy Committee and Executive Board level, but there is a Transportation Technical Committee that are planning and zoning, and Highway Department is also present on. So, there's a lot of issues that monthly we are working on with MetroCog. Particularly of note, as you've heard me report, MetroCog has been really helpful in advocating for the 15th Avenue need for a mat bus stop on 15th Avenue. Certainly, they're not doing the, pushing the need particularly, but in regards to the studying and the counts and dealing with mat bus, they've been really helpful. We continue to push forward with that. There's been several dead ends, if you want to call them that way. But as we move forward to that being such a hub for citizen services with our DMV and Withdrawal Management and our Resource Recovery Facility, that is a great spot, if you will, for a stop. So, thanks to MetroCog for their help on all of those issues.
We're grateful for that. That's a need that is up to this point unaddressed, but we need to be consistent in letting them know that our citizens need that route. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I might just keep some of these on that back table if any of the audience wants them.
That's great. And also too, we do have a county spotlight with some highlights issues in the county. I'm wondering if we can get that information or the social media post on there. I think that would be really helpful to continue. Jackie's our social media, where she can handle that.
All right, we'll work with her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Justin Sormar, County Engineer, has several issues here. First one is going to be a request approval for final contract voucher for SAPO 14-601-009.
Yes, good morning. So, I'm bringing forward the final contract voucher for the project number that you had mentioned. So, this is a removal of the North Broadway Bridge. The initial bid was $849,941.0. And the final amount to be approved is $849,941.0. And this is split half and half between bridge bonding and City of Fargo funds. And the City of Fargo did also approve of this.
The City of Fargo has already approved it?
Correct. Moved to approve.
A motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes.
Second item I have is requesting approval to purchase a lawnmower. So, recently, we did purchase, I did get approval to purchase the Holly Shop, the old MinDOT shop, and it's about five acres there. We don't really have a, we have a lot of ditch mowers, we just don't have a standard riding lawnmower. So, I did find some money in our Internal Service Fund as well as my building, repair, and maintenance budget. And I did get a quote from Ardio in Holly for purchase of a new lawnmower in the amount of $16,816.03.
Commissioner Moshe?
Thank you. Where are you anticipating this mower being, at the shop?
In Holly, and then we also will use it in Barnesville and Yulin as well.
Do you have an aluminum trailer?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the reason, so this one is a diesel lawnmower. The reason we did go diesel is all of our service tanks are diesel. We don't have a service tank that's gas. And the longevity of these diesel mowers are, it'll last a long time. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a lawnmower from Ardio for $16,816.03.
I'll second the motion.
A motion second. I certainly feel better looking at this, having just bought a lawnmower. Apparently, I came in way under your bed.
But it's not a diesel.
Not a diesel.
Nor a 60-inch deck.
All right.
So, maybe you should ask him if they give a deal if you buy two instead of one, because we've also got another request for a lawnmower by Joe.
Sure.
Something similar, probably a similar price range. So, might be just worth asking him, you know, can we get a bulk rate?
I can ask him. They were priced out of Sourcewell, so my guess is no.
Oh, okay. Well, it never hurts to ask.
No, it doesn't, I can.
May I ask, what is Sourcewell?
Sourcewell is a cooperative purchasing agreement. It's similar to the state bid. It's what a lot of the bigger vendors use, because the state bid is typically just one piece of equipment, and all of the options have to be the exact way on the state bid. At Sourcewell, you're allowed to price different things, so you can pick different options. So, like, for example, on the state bid, they may have only had a 48-inch deck or something like that, and you wouldn't have the option to use a 60.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, we have motion second. All those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. You're next.
Yes, so I'm requesting approval to purchase the extended warranty for two plow trucks that we recently received. So, we did purchase these from Kenworth, Wall Works out of Fargo. So, the original purchase price of the trucks was $336,662.0. So, that's per truck. I am requesting to purchase the extended warranty for $6,940 each. So, this was intended to be on the truck, just with the speed that we had to move. We missed it, and so did Wall Works. This has been pretty standard that we purchase these on all the trucks recently. We feel as though these warranties more than pay for themselves. And now that we are probably having to keep equipment longer than we ever have, I think this is a good thing.
Commissioner Moshe?
Thank you. That was going to be my question and comment. You know, over the last several months, we've talked about how quickly the cost of equipment has really risen and might need to look at keeping equipment around a little bit longer. Certainly, your staff is excellent in regards to maintaining and repairing and figuring out that as we need. But this will more than pay for itself, certainly as you discussed.
And the price of this is less than a major repair on one item once.
Absolutely.
It certainly looks like it's a good investment. Any other comments? Do we have motion?
Moved to approve of the extended warranties as requested.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
And then the next item I have is request approval to sell two plow trucks on Minbid. So, these are the two that those trucks are replacing. It's units 155 and 172. So, I'd be seeking approval to sell them on Minbid with a reserve price of $30,000 each.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moshe?
Thank you, I approve of this. The only clarification I have is understanding that you're replacing units with the same unit number. I think for the minutes, it could be confusing to approve selling 155 and 172 right after we just approved a motion for 155 and 172. So, I just want to clarify that the motion would be to approve selling the older units, 155 and 172, on Minbid.
And you could, in the minutes, so in our equipment book, we just have 155 old and 172 old.
Perfect.
Put it that way.
Mr. Chair, I might make a motion to approve selling units 155 old and 172 old on Minbid with a reserve price of $30,000 each.
Second.
A motion second, any further discussion? If not all in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We were going to take a five-minute break at this point. We're back, and we've got Sheriff Empting and his staff here going to give us their budget presentation. Sheriff, make introductions and...
Yeah, so, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thanks for having us here this morning. Obviously, we have our emergency manager, Lieutenant Tweetin, Chief Deputy Martin, and jail administrator, Carrie Tootin, with us. I'll start off this presentation with the law enforcement side of it. And then, Chief Deputy Martin's going to take over, or Chief Deputy Martin and Carrie are going to do the corrections side, and then we'll have Gabe be the anchor and bring it all together. So, there's three main things that's really affecting the sheriff's office budget this year that's making it look a little worse than it really is. And those three main things are going to be the steps and colas, the two deputies that we added in 2024, along with the regional dispatch budget. That was a big increase this year as well. So, we'll get started with our revenue increases and decreases, as you can see here on the screen. We're increasing revenue for police relief aid by $25,000. We just anticipate more state funding with that. Line 5277, our police training reimbursements, we're increasing that $10,000 as well, just based on some recent history. We feel like we're going to be getting more in that area. Our rent for 5810 from Moorhead PD contract, that's just an additional $1,000. That should be where we're at now for the remainder of this contract. It should just be the 426, I believe, is what it is. Our miscellaneous revenue, an extra $10,000 increase there just with some Moorhead PD overtime that we're doing. Our sheriff contingency fund that we get from court fines and things like that, an additional $1,500. And we are decreasing our miscellaneous refunds by $35,000. Our SRO contracts with DGF and Yulin, they're wanting to decrease hours. Yulin is dropping down to just 10 hours a week, and DGF 32 hours a week. So, because of that, we had to drop that miscellaneous refunds down a bit. Overall, our projected revenue increase is $12,500 over 2024. Any questions before moving on?
Yeah, the Moorhead PDOT, is that just kind of a pass-through? I mean, is that money then included in the checks of the officers that work the duty?
Right, so that when they work the overtime, we do bill them for the overtime, but we also bill them for use of the squad car as well.
Okay.
It's about $12.50 an hour for the car. So, if they work a 10-hour shifts, it's $125 for the use of the squad as well.
Okay, very good.
Continuing on here with some expenditure increases and salaries. As you can see here, this is where it kind of starts to hurt a little bit with the salary increases and things like that, along with the two additional deputies that were hired. Our projected increase for salaries and benefits is $240,000. And then, $214 for the two additional deputies that were hired in 2024. Questions on that? I'm sorry?
I'm just curious, is the public safety funds, is that just totally done? Or is there, how does that?
So, we do still have some public safety dollars available, and that would be something if the board wanted to do, they could put towards those salaries for those deputies as well. I don't know how much is available at this particular time that someone Laurie would have. But we did go eight months before we did hire one of our public safety deputies here in 2024. So, there should be some additional dollars there that we could put towards that.
But was that fund for a one-time?
Yes, that was a one-time fund.
That wasn't part of a continuing allocation?
Correct, that was just a one-time fund, yeah.
So, you have to go back and lobby some more?
Correct, yeah. And these are some increases that we're requesting. Line 2036252 Gas, an additional $5,000, just based on some Excel Energy and Moorhead Public Service increased prices. Line 6277 Training, an additional $5,000. In 2024, we had an individual come in and do a training for us called Use of Force Rules of Engagement. He is a former attorney out of Washington County. His name is Imran Ali, and he put together just a great training for us that I truly believe is going to save the county a lot of money for liability in the future, along with saving careers. He's just, he's an excellent instructor. With that, we also opened that training up to jail staff, and we did open it up to other law enforcement agencies in Northwest Minnesota. So, we did have other deputies and officers come to the training. We did bill those officers like $100 for the training. So, we did recoup some money back, but this is definitely a great training that we need to continue to have in the future. So, that's why we have that increase there. Then 6292 FM Animal Hospital, an additional $1,000. We've just had some kind of increased use in FM Animal Hospital services. So, we're requesting an additional $1,000 there. Our impound lot, this is something that we're going to be looking into a little bit more here, but this increase in snow removal fees, and we recently looked into this a little bit, and we're learning that we, as the county, pay for snow removal at the impound lot, even though we don't use it a lot right now. But we're paying for that snow removal of the impound lot, along with the road that goes up towards the range. And another area that they park in there that's solely used by Moorhead PD. So, we're going to look into this a little bit more to see if we do need to have that increase in there or what. But there's some snow removal that we're doing that I don't think we should be necessarily covering. Traveling expenses, we've had an increased cost in demand this year for traveling expenses. This is one to where, if we have an individual with a warrant that's out of state and we need to bring them back, either we're sending deputies to go do that, you know, we'll fly them somewhere, or we pay a company to do that for us. And that's ranging anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000, depending on where they're at in the United States. So, we're seeing kind of an increased cost in that, so we're requesting additional $10,000. For uniforms, an additional $5,000. This is an area that Gabe is a subject matter expert on, and he requested the extra $5,000 in there, just some increased prices in uniforms and then hiring and things like that. Seems like we're either at or over in other years there. Auto repair and maintenance, man, we're seeing a lot of increased costs in that. The price to repair a squad car nowadays gets to be pretty expensive. So, an additional $15,000 there is being requested. And then last is gas and oil, and that's just based on a three-year average. So, requesting an additional $10,000 there. So, our projected expenditure increase for all non-salary lines is $54,000.
Commissioner Moshe?
Just going back to the impound lot, is that something that we advertise for bids? Or has that just been an assumption that we're moving that stuff?
That basically goes through Joe. Joe works with JT Lawn Service on that, and I believe Joe does do an advertisement with that.
So, are we, we cover 100% of that?
Right now, I believe we're covering most of it, yeah, at the impound lot. Yep, at the impound lot, we're covering most of that.
Yeah, I would be interested in looking through with that. I mean, it's clear, it's a shared use, you know, county stuff is occupying half of, if that.
Yeah, and we're, like I said, we're using it... Yeah, and we're, like I said, we're using it less now. Um, we're not imponing a lot of vehicles, and if we do, we're using private companies to do that, and they just take them right to their lot. Really, the only vehicles that we're taking to the impound lot are, are seized vehicles, and whether it's a DUI seizure or a fleeing seizure or something like that, so we're just not using it, um, like we used to.
Right, okay, yeah, look into that. The other question I had in regards to the FM Animal Hospital, are you, um, certainly we've used them for a number of years, and I understand that's for the canines. Have we, we looked at other entities throughout the county or in town in regards to that, that relationship? Does it make sense to continue?
Honestly, we have not looked at any other entities, just 'cause there's not a lot of entities available, um, to do that. It, um, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a headache even for FM Animal Hospital, so I, I don't know of a lot of entities that would be willing to take that on.
Right, I got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we also have our task force, this lines 205 and 217. With our US Marshals Task Force, salaries and benefits are reimbursed, it's generally about $20,000, and it's only submitted overtime that's, uh, reimbursed through that task force. We have our Postal Service Task Force that we, uh, that we got into an agreement with a few years ago. We get reimbursed overtime on that for $18,649. Uh, the difference between this task force and the US Marshals one is they actually give us a squad car reimbursement as well for $850 a month. So at $10,200 yearly, we get reimbursed back, um, for the squad car usage. And the federal fiscal year is October 1 through September 30th, so if there's any changes, we won't know that until September. For the 206 line, our medical examiner, um, you can see there the cost of each autopsy with transportation is roughly $3,000. Um, the budget proposal is based on previous three-year average, about 45. We are actually looking to decrease autopsies by 10,000 and travel and expenses by 5,000. This is just based on some of our, uh, previous year averages. And as of, you can see there, as of July 15th, we're sitting at 32 autopsies for the year. This is one that is very, very difficult to gauge and under, you know, try and get a good number, um, just 'cause you just don't know what's gonna happen throughout the year. And last is our, our, our budget proposal for dispatch, lines 204 and 251. Uh, the Red River Regional Dispatch budget is going to be $6,259,316 in 2025, it's a 14.52% increase. Our percentage of that is 8.3%, which is $519,000, $519,000, $519,523.27. With our, uh, 911 fees that we get, we split that with Morehead, so we get $150,182, and our net share is $369,341.27. We do, um, share that cost with our rural cities, the city's reimbursement is about 52% of that, uh, for $192,000, 57, $192,057. And then our share is $177,283.70. On top of that as well, we have our New World Maintenance for 2025 is a 5.95% increase. As you can see there, um, we have 15.84% of that for $90,426. And it's based on per device, uh, our rural cities do get billed for that as well, because they have 31 devices that they're using in our rural cities. Uh, so our share of, um, New World Maintenance is remaining 57 devices for $58,000, $58,572.6.
Anything? Commissioner Campbell.
Sheriff, I'm looking at your, um, budget here, and on your, um, revenues... Excuse me. Yeah, on your revenues, it's, it's showed a, um, budget projection, the revenues of $1,079,402, and it's showing year-to-date that you've only collected $78,000. What, what's up with that?
Well, some of that's the pistol permit side of it, um, and then I'd have to kinda go through this line by line. Our general service charge, I gotta see what we get on that. Do you recall what we're billing on that, Chris?
So the main ones, I mean, the police, we immediately paid that company from state as a one-time, one-time payment, uh, $240,000, so $350,000 projected, and then the other main...
One would be the $425,000, the rent from...
And that comes in later?
Yep.
Okay, so just as...
Lori bills that one, or the auditor will bill that one, that one out.
And, and it, you know, and I...
It's projecting very similar to what it was last year, I'm paced for receiving that.
Okay, and I, I, I see that, so, um, then the same question goes to the total 2024 budget expenditures of $6,451, and year-to-date through June, it's, it's, uh, $2684. Uh, and if I'm, you know, so there, there's, that seems to be trending low.
Yeah, you know, right now, some of that's salaries, we, we have to, we have to finish out the year for salaries and then things of that nature, along with, um...
But the salaries would be paid.
Excuse me?
The salaries would be paid, I mean, they...
Right. I'm just, uh, I'm trying to go line by line here, just to see where, where we're at.
So it looks like on the salaries, we're at about 33% of the budget, uh, just a little under 33% of the budget for the year. We, we do have all those positions except for one of the positions filled. We're waiting for one more pay period to get entered into...
Okay.
Into the budget, so I, we may be a little less than the 50% that we're at, but I think it'll be very close to that.
Okay.
Other than it took a while to get our, our last, um, new deputy.
I know all your expenditures, according to this, it's like at 41%, 41.6%?
I don't have that percentage on, on, on my sheet here, so it's hard for me to kinda look at it and gauge right away, um...
And I, and again...
Some of the other big ones are, are like our gas bill and more public service, where Joe will, will bill us, or the facility director will bill us out, uh, closer to the end of the year, or even at the beginning of next year, for this year. So we're showing zero for, for, um, uh, gas, uh, Excel Energy, where we're gonna have a projected $50,000 to $60,000 bill that'll come in towards the end of the year or right after the end of the year.
Okay. I don't think we've paid some of our, uh, cloud storage yet either, so we'll eventually get that bill for cloud storage as well, um, and that's obviously gonna be another, uh, large bill.
I'm just al- always wishful thinking that we didn't spend as much as we thought we'd have to, uh, just to be upfront on it, I'm...
Yeah, I, I don't think you're the only one that's in that position as well, I, I am as well.
With the mild winter, we are going to save a little bit in gas and oil.
Sure.
We're, we're at 55,000 now out of the 170,000 that we budgeted.
Yeah.
I can't project what's gonna happen October, November, December, but hopefully we'll come in under budget on that one.
Thank you.
That's what I have Chris around for, he, he can pick right up, and I don't know a lot of stuff. So this is the overall 2025 budget proposal, as you can see, the 203, our sheriff fund, it's an 8.5% increase, a lot of that has to do with, um, the salaries and the, uh, the one-time, the one-time public safety funds that we received. The 205 fund, the postal service, um, it's a 35% increase, but with that, we do get, um, the overtime reimbursed along with the vehicle. So we, uh, we should stay pretty good there. The medical examiner is a 10.4% decrease, and then our dispatch is a 10 and 1/2% increase. So at the very bottom there, you can see what those three main contributors are for our, uh, our, our budget increases, is the cola, uh, the one-time public safety dollars, and, um, and dispatch.
You know, I, when, Mr. Jerm, when we, sheriff, when we, you know, the question was brought up about our public safety funds, and, and in the past, I think there was, you know, I, obviously, all of, all of the things that we funded through that were, I, I think very appropriate, and, and I believe there was some maybe that funneled through the county, county attorney's office as well, and some, some other things that can help in terms of litigation and that type of thing, but, um, I, I do, I do think, you know, it would be important for you to, um, I'm assuming that you haven't come up with anything else, uh, out of the ordinary that, that you would be coming to us on those funds for, so I, maybe it might be something, uh, worth considering, you know, to...
I'm not sure how much is left in that fund.
Well, I, it's not a significant amount, it might be 30,000 or...
I can, I can assure you, uh, just being on the Public Safety Committee, there, this is not gonna be something we can anticipate occurring again.
Oh, oh, I know, I know that, yeah, yeah, I, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, I mean, with, with, this is certainly a significant increase, and if we have the ability to help buy that down by using some of those public safety dollars, we should, you know, and I, and that's why I'm asking, is if, if there's anything else on top of this that...
I, uh, I, I can't foresee anything else that I'm gonna be thinking about for the public safety dollars, and quite honestly, when we, um, when we initially presented for those, uh, those funds for the two deputies, they were four salaries, um, so I feel that we should continue to use that for salaries if we do have some funds left over, especially that we, we didn't hire one of the deputies, um, until he's gonna start August 5th, so it's gonna, eight months before we're gonna get somebody in that position. I think those funds should go towards salaries.
Oh, they absolutely should, if you, I mean, if you have almost seven months' worth that has, this board's already approved, I think all of that should be used to, to buy down 25.
Yep. And, and we can make an inquiry into the amount that's left in the public safety fund, and maybe we can meet and determine if we wanna apply that into your budget as well to offset some of the increase.
Well, just going to, with Commissioner Moser, so, so the, the dollars of the public safety money were, were committed for the hiring of those positions.
Correct.
But because those positions may not have been hired as soon as you would have liked, doesn't mean that those dollars still aren't already committed to that. So now in your new budget, uh, you've, you've included that full cost in it, but yet maybe from the, and I don't know how you even reported the offset on those expenditures by the public safety dollars, I don't know where the public safety dollars are in this, and maybe, Chris, maybe you have an answer for that.
It's, um...
Yeah, so the auditor placed them right into the part-time salaries, 214,000 into part-time, 107,000 was allocated per, per new deputy, uh, that was added in, so we had no request for part-time salaries for 2024 budget until the auditor placed those additional public safety funds into, into that fund.
Right, but say there's $20,000 that didn't get requested, that just moves the goal line, how far that 20,000, or whatever it is, how much longer those public safety funds can be utilized. I wasn't, I wasn't saying we're advocating for more...
Right.
Based on that comment, but what I'm saying is it helps push that back, similar to what we did to Attorney Milton's position that didn't get filled either with COVID funds.
We were able, we were able to hire one of the, uh, of the deputies right away at the end of December, and we're, August 5th, the other deputy's gonna start, so we do have eight months of salaries that we could put towards, towards this.
Yeah, and so, and the point that I'm making in your 2025 budget, you're incorporating the full annual amount for both.
Correct.
In your budget and, and expenditure line items.
Correct.
But yet, I'm wondering where, where it's showing for the dollars from the public safety fund coming in to offset some of those expenditures? Do you follow what I'm saying, the revenues?
Yep.
Because, because it's not, those aren't levy dollars, those are, those are public safety dollars, and I, so are they in, are, are they in, in here?
They're not in our 2025 requests, they haven't been allocated to us. The 2024 were allocated and placed as, as revenue in the overtime line, but they were placed in as revenue in that line.
And, okay, so they're, okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, part of our discussion with Lori Johnson is Lori was, is going to go back, or is planning to go back to evaluate what we've allocated, what we've spent, and she'll get us a, a dollar amount to, to, uh, Chief Deputy's comments. Again, there isn't a, there isn't a, uh, a part-time salary, a component to that, but we certainly, once we get that information, we could add that to offset.
Very good.
And if the board, if the board wishes, or the committee's wishes were to any dollar amounts remaining outside of that, uh, you could also choose to bring that forward too.
Yeah, I think you should have a public safety...
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. We can have a public safety discussion on that.
Yep.
I mean, if there's not, I mean, I, I don't know how far out they wanted that public, and, you know, I don't think they really intended for us to have that money sitting in a bank account for the next four years, and the idea was to, you know, fund public safety issues now. So we get, we'll work on it, Mark, and Chris, it's...
Sounds good.
If Lori can identify that for us, we'll just have a meeting and we'll figure out how to, uh, deal with the impact on next year's budget.
There, but not on here, interesting, okay? All right. I can still use it then, it's still, it's still allowing me to go through things, so that's, that's, uh, the, the end of the 203, um, in the law enforcement side of it. We'll turn it over to the corrections side if there are no further questions at this point.
Here's no questions.
So for the corrections sides, uh, the 250, just with the revenue, uh, we have two changes, and I'll only cover the changes in the revenue, um, and expenditures. So for those two changes, the first one is the Huber payments, the 5427 line, uh, we're anticipating, uh, a $2,000 decline in, in funding from this, we're just seeing a lot fewer inmates that are qualifying for, for Huber, um, and in the future, I think we'll continue to see a decline in this, this fund as well.
If for the public, could you identify what that is? The Huber?
That's the work release program, when courts authorize work release for certain individuals.
And then our second one is the phone commissions, 5431, this one is a little deceiving, uh, we're still receiving the funds, the funds will still go in, we had budgeted 25,000 last year, uh, for 2025, we're removing that because the funds, um, the state has said that those funds now need to go into the inmate social welfare, uh, fund, so they'll still be coming in, just not to the phone commissions account. So we're looking at a decrease in revenue of 27,000 for 2025.
The, the welfare fund, who, so the, the money is still being collected and it goes there, but so that, is that not ours?
It is, yes, and we receive it each, each year, and we spend it specifically on programming or, um, items that are directly related to, to the inmates and their welfare.
So the, so the revenue still should be somewhere in your...
Yes, that account, that account is tracked by our, by our auditor.
Well, why wouldn't, so doesn't that help offset some of the expenditure, expenditures of the welfare?
Maybe you can answer that one a little bit better.
Yes, it, it does, but it's, it's kind of like a, um, the inmate budget doesn't have any bearing on our budget, it will save us some areas, in, in other areas, like jail supplies, if we can show that it is strictly for inmate welfare and programming.
I'm just trying to understand, I...
Yeah.
So where, where did, where did the 25,000 that used to budget, where, where did that come from? Where'd it come from?
The phone commissions.
Okay, that was off the...
They're, they're, yep, all the calls that they make, uh, text us...
There's those fees that are paid, and, and then we get a portion of those fees?
Right.
Okay.
And that goes right now back, now it has to go back into the inmate fund. To pay for supplies for programs, new gym equipment, stuff like that.
But all those expenses that you just talked about, are they in your budget, the expenses?
No.
Okay, the expenses aren't either?
No.
No, those are all tracked by, by the auditor's office.
Okay, that, then I, I just, I'm just trying to make sure that I follow this, so...
And there's also a push, uh, at the state level to have free inmate calling, so there's a potential for those funds to go away as well.
Thank you. As far as the...
So with that, who pays for, who pays for free?
So with that, who pays for, who pays for free?
Who pays for free?
We would.
We would.
It's, it's called the levy.
Yep.
For salaries and benefits, you can see that we're projecting an increase of ninety-six thousand for 2025. Salaries increases remain fairly low because of the constant turnover that we have with the jail staff, but that also leads to an increase in overtime salaries. We have had a difficult time keeping part-time staff over there. So there is, we're anticipating reduction in part-time salaries, but an increase in the, in the overtime salaries. And then in 2025, we will see an increase for para, for correctional officers. Para payments have increased for the state, making the decision that our correctional officers will pay him more, meaning that we will also pay him more for, for those.
So the percentage goes up?
Yes, yep. So that starts in July 1st. The auditor was able to figure out what our projected 2025 portion will be. The line items that we have, we have just a few of the changes in there. After speaking with our facilities director, we're comfortable lowering, lowering our gas or XL bill by seventy thousand for the year. Our sixty-two, seventy-one, our other professional services, which includes our TASER contract, our Eaton contract, and the River Project with Lakeland Mental Health, expecting increases of thirty thousand dollars. Much of that is that we're, we're moving our TASER contract into other professional services from equipment over five hundred, because we do have a large contract going into equipment over five hundred. Sixty-two, seventy-seven is our training. Sheriff Empting spoke briefly about our use of force training and instructor that we brought in. We did send correctional officers to that training as well. We're going to move forward with phase two of the training next year, and we would like to budget to, to send COs to that. Our sixty-two, ninety-five prisoner board, which covers our meals, we base that off of a three-year average. We're projecting those numbers to go down this year again, so we're reducing by twelve thousand. Sixty-two, ninety-six prisoner care medical, we have our ACH contract, which will be a five, five percent increase for 2025. In addition to that, we are needing to take on additional hours from their staff, which will be approximately forty thousand dollars for additional staffing hours with them. So that, the major part of that will be the, the five percent contract increase and the additional hours. Sixty-three, oh-one building repair, again, speaking with the facility directors, we do anticipate some need within the correctional facility, specifically within the shower area. The facility director won't be able to pay for all of the improvements, so we anticipate an additional five thousand coming out of there to help with the shower repairs. Office supplies, again, based on average, the sixty-four, oh-one line, just reducing that by one thousand. Sixty-four, twenty-one jail supplies, we do have a significant cost for mattress replacements for this year that we anticipate will be approximately ten thousand dollars. And sixty-five, sixty-one and sixty-five, sixty-two, the auto repair and gas and oil were lines that were added last year. They were moved from the sheriff's budget into corrections budget. We did not use the amount that we thought that we would need to, so we're just reducing it down to be comparable to what we were looking at forecasting for the rest of 2024. And then equipment over five hundred, increasing by twenty-five thousand. The majority of that is coming from our cloud storage that we'll be using for our body worn cameras. And as you can see at the bottom, the expenditure increase for all non-salary 250 lines is eighty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars.
I think if you recall, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that the cloud storage was one of the things that we had discussed originally about potentially utilizing public safety funds to, to cover that. And so, again, if we utilize all of those different dollar amounts, this would, this was something that we, we looked at potentially utilizing.
And the ACH increase there, some of that has to do with the, we're requesting some additional hours from them for mental health. We did lose a longtime person from Lakeland Mental Health, so we have to kind of offset that cost with, with some additional hours there. So that's why that increases so much.
And then last week, we had met with our, our auditor and the county administrator, and we went over a new request, a core track. It's a jail management system for, for tracking the flow of inmates within the correctional facility. After speaking with them, it was determined that we would be able to remove that as a new request and fund that through the inmate welfare fund that we had talked about briefly at the beginning of the, of the presentation. So I will talk to the auditor and we'll get that removed from our, from our new request. So as far as corrections, for 2024, we had proposed seven million, fifty-five thousand, seven thirty-six. For 2025, we're requesting seven million, two hundred and thirty-two, six thirty-nine, which will be an increase of two point five one percent. Any questions about the corrections portion of the budget?
Commissioner Campbell?
Maybe, maybe if we could just get a, an update on how the food service is going? Is that, is that still, is it still hanging in there and?
Yep, the food service is going great, actually. I have no issues with them. I can't speak for the, the other two facilities, but everybody's hired, meals go out on time.
Okay, then there, our contracted, what was the other one that had to do with the health?
The other one we have would be ACH, Advanced Care.
Increase?
Yeah.
Lakeland?
No, I'm thinking of something else here. I'll, I'll think of it.
The River Project?
Huh?
River Project.
Just speaking of the River Project, I did reach out to them and they are not obviously going to charge us, so there probably will be a couple of months, depending on the, their ability to hire a professional, mental health professional. So that will cut back some of that cost for a while.
I was going to report on that in my committees, but, you know, Carrie and I did have a conversation before and it's concerning to lose that practitioner. Lakeland's being creative in how they recruit. Certainly it's a niche that a provider needs to have and hopefully we don't go too long without that, but Lakeland is committed. They're really proud of that partnership and the service they provide. We'll see.
It is something that is recognized when we have a, a committee, the Public Safety Committee with Minnesota, with the AMC. It is spoken highly of, it's something we can be proud of, but that, that is something, is it a little concerning that the lack of practitioners in this area is impacting on Anything else? Commissioner Krabnikoff?
I should have asked a question earlier, but it, and it didn't hit me till later. And if I can go back at the beginning, when we were talking about Red River Dispatch and our share of everything, and, and just kind of hearing the conversations, you know, that you give reporting on, on the cost of building and that. So is there, should we anticipate after 2025 significant increases through that? Or at some point do you see where it will be, there won't be surprises, so to speak? Or do we, can you understand what I'm getting at? Then, then, is there a way to anticipate where there won't be such great amounts?
No.
Of cost?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to jump in here because I chair the dispatch center board of authority. We, we do not need to anticipate any costs associated with building the dispatch center. We've paid those, those, the, the funding that we're, both us and Morehead, the Minnesota side, has paid the funding that we're committed to for the building of that project, and any increases will be handled by West Fargo and Fargo.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was a big amount there.
Yeah, that, that, and that's true on the bricks and mortar side. The, in the 2025 budget, it, it does include increasing the staffing levels.
Correct, yep.
But not by, by how many, is it four?
Four dispatchers, one, one administrative assistant, and then a part-time administrative assistant as well.
But I, but I, but I, I don't believe that, did they incorporate those for the entire year 2025?
I believe they did, yes.
Because I think they anticipated hiring them all, right?
Yep.
Before the dispatch center opens.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. So then after that, then it's just a matter of, I, I think that gets them to, was it forty-eight?
Be forty-seven dispatchers.
Forty-seven dispatchers.
Okay. And it's all important work, but I, you know, just anticipation of future budgets, so.
So my question, and I, and I keep thinking back and I, and I have to say the name, but I know we had a contract and we had a contract with MEND and then that changed, what, what area was that? What?
That was the healthcare, that was the.
That's prisoner care.
Yep.
Okay.
ACH prisoner care.
Okay, okay. So that was what, so, so now that's another ninety-eight thousand increase.
Yeah, there's a five percent increase and plus where we're going to be out in for more mental health dollars.
And that's where Lakeland comes in?
Yes.
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
The lack of Lakeland billable in the interim while they search will be reduced, but it'll need to be increased to make up in the interim, correct?
It already needed to be increased anyway with the amount of people we have coming in.
Right.
This is going to, going to end up being in addition to as well.
We, we were only getting eight hours a month from ACH for mental health services, so we're looking to get sixteen hours, I'm sorry, a week, eight hours a week. We're looking to get sixteen hours a week now for, for those services.
Which goes to speak to the recurring problem of us using the jails for mental health services in a community.
Correct, and it's, it's something that all sheriffs are trying to, trying to, trying to work with our politicians to see if we can get other type of mental health services, because when you take somebody that does not belong in a jail setting, you're just essentially, you're criminalizing mental health and that is not the right thing to do.
Precisely.
Which I think that should be part of the dialogue, understanding, you know, I struggle a little bit with the calling, we talked about the reduction in revenue there, how much that'll actually cost if the legislature makes that free, because people are only calling so much as they have the funds for, so it's really hard to put a pulse on that. But if we're talking about making it free for the mental health of the inmates, my soapbox is let's legitimately step up and put some money into mental health for those folks there. And so I think that can be part of our recurring dialogue when we talk to legislators and certainly looping folks in, Senator Kupac, Representative Keeler, and Joy to that conversation.
Go ahead, proceed.
All right. Be on to Gabe to just wrap it all up.
All right, yep, wrap it all up here. So for my 2025 emergency management budget, 281, there's no anticipated change in the EMPG, the Emergency Management Performance Grant calculation on that. So we've figured the thirty-seven, nine, nine, two for that amount. You can go into, so really, other than the, on, on salary and things like that, just the normal step increases and COLA on that, the asks, or I guess the increases, first one would be 281, six, two, four, two, and that's subscriptions. That was added, I believe we added that last year or the year before. I use a, I'm using a program called Salamander. It's widely used throughout the state of Minnesota, actually throughout the nation. Our partners over in Cass County and Fargo use it. And I started out with, there's different levels to the subscription. I started out with what's called asset management. And so I use that quite heavily with not only managing what assets, emergency management has available as far as like sandbags, stuff for sheltering, public health uses it, they use it, they kind of started getting into it with some other COVID stuff for standing up their vaccine clinics. And then I also use it for the sheriff's office and it really has, I feel anyway, and Chris could probably back me on this, it, we've done a lot better job here since using that, tracking our, our consumable items. Not only do we enter our, our normal equipment in there, I'm able to assign equipment to squad cars. So let's say a deputy has certain things in his squad cars, they're assigned to that squad car, so it's a lot easier to track that way. But also our consumables, like our medical supplies, ammunition, like when we have a training and we use, you know, thousands of rounds, rounds of ammunition, just a lot easier to track that. Things are barcoded and deputies are able to, you know, if our firearms instructors, for instance, are taking out, you know, a couple cases of ammo, they scan it out of the system. It's a lot easier to run reports and track it. So really, that's been valuable. Now, I'd like to add to that now. We've utilized it a little bit on some bigger state events, but there's some, there's a plans portion to it, a track app and a rapid tag app. And what that allows us to do, I would like to, my goal is to credential all of our emergency services in the county. So that would be like our volunteer firefighters, volunteer EMS, all law enforcement, and you can, there's a federal guideline kind of on, on credentialing for different trainings and things like that. So for instance, a certain firefighter might have a specialized, you know, hazmat ops certificate that's federally recognized. They would all be credentialed, given an ID card. And so if we have a large event in Clay County, for instance, like the, the elevator fire we had in Holly when we had agencies from not only Clay County, but three other counties assisting us, we'd be able to create an event for that, scan it in, track all of that. Obviously we'd have hourly rates, equipment rates, things like that. So it really, it really makes it easy and much cleaner for us to track a large event. I would look at using it for something like a steam freshers reunion, you know, just use it more, more in our everyday, but also it would, it would pay for itself should we have a large, a large disaster where we're bringing in a lot of volunteers. It also allows us to quickly credential, enter in volunteers and then track their time. So it is, it's a, to get the additional applications as part of Salamander, I would be looking for like a, a twenty-nine-hundred dollar increase, so to bring that, bring that line item from twenty-three to fifty-two-hundred. And that, that, I know it's a big ask, but I, again, it's kind of one of those that I feel like may not be something that would pay for itself in year one, year two, but sooner or later we will have an event large enough where it, I feel like just the, the way to track stuff and have a real true, true record of, of what was expended would, would more than pay for itself. Moving on to other professional services, seventy-two, seventy-one, that is, I didn't put up there, but Valley Water Rescue, so what we pay out of that one is Valley Water Rescue, our Northwest Radio Board dues, and then our First Link, First Link dues, which First, First Link is at a call center that would assist us in an, in an emergency situation, answering phones that, phone calls that wouldn't necessarily be right for dispatch. We had two increase requests, and that would be, the first one was from Valley Water Rescue. They, they sent us a annual budget request and an overall budget request for them, so using the MetroCog formula, our, our portion looks like it went up about a thousand dollars a year, so we went from thirty-five to forty-five hundred dollars for our annual contract with Valley Water Rescue. And then also our First Link, that is not reflected, the, the dollar, the dollar amount of the increase, but I didn't list First Link up there. Our annual fee for First Link, I, in 2024 was five thousand dollars, and they increased that two thousand dollars up to seven thousand dollars. So I'm looking for a, a two thousand dollar addition to other professional services. Right now, it doesn't appear that there's going to be an ask at least for 2025 for our, our radio board dues. Those are thirty-five hundred annually, but it gives us a little bit of wiggle room should, should they decide to increase those or the, the Valley Water Rescue one is adjusted a little bit. Any questions on that one? And then really my other ones, office supplies, sixty-four, oh-one, just looking for a three hundred dollar increase to that annual one, or I'm sorry, two hundred EM supplies, that's EOC supplies, emergency management trailer, sixty-four, fifty-three, looking for a two hundred dollar increase to that. And then equipment to, equipment internal service. Last year, if you recall, you added some to that, I think it was a thousand dollar increase to that, to kind of help with our, not only like the emergency management trailer, but our drone, drone purchases come out of that. And we did identify a couple other additional items that we would like to add to the, the drone program, so I'm, I'm asking for a five hundred dollar increase. Um, so I'm, I'm asking for a five hundred dollar increase now, just basically to, uh, bolster our supply of batteries. And there's a couple other things that, uh, allow for extended flight time. Um, they have a, it's a tether, basically, an extension cord that you can plug into the drone and it can hover and, and, uh, you don't necessarily need a pilot at that point to be, uh, with it and it would, uh, essentially can, uh, run off of, uh, the tether. So you don't have to bring it down and switch out batteries. But we found that that would have been rather handy, especially at the elevator fire where we were just putting it up to monitor streams and stuff like that. But it didn't necessarily at all times need to be, um, supervised. So, any questions on those? That's, um, at least my, my main, um, asks other than the normal, uh, COLA and, uh, increase to salary.
Questions for you, Abe.
Great, thank you.
Anything additional, Sheriff?
I don't believe so.
Good, comprehensive report, my compliments to your staff, to you.
Thank you. Trying to get this out of here.
Counselor, you're up. Ryan Melton, the county attorney with, uh, his budget, budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I didn't, uh, make any slides, those are nice, so, um, but, uh, uh, anyway, um, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to brief you on the two thousand twenty-five budget. Um, and I'll just start right in, uh, under the county attorney, the revenues really have only two pieces. One comes from four D work, doing child support work with social services, uh, that we get refunded, um, uh, for. And then, uh, other refunds that come out of the state and the courts, uh, and those are set through the state and, and come through each year. And so Lori puts those in, um, and that's our revenues. Um, the salary increase piece is, is purely COLA, um, as well as then the increase for health insurance payer and social security. And they all pretty well comport with other year increases. And, uh, so we're looking at somewhere between four to five percent increase on that. Uh, some of our printing and publishing, uh, has gone up year to year and we seem to be always missing that mark a little bit. So I increased that, um, up to twenty-two thousand. Uh, and then our line, uh, our transcripts are lower, typically transcripts using those for, uh, trial work or, um, other contested hearing work, uh, has come down quite a bit over the last few years. So we brought that back down to the level from back in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and then also the same, uh, with service process, not as many witnesses and, and our, uh, that's been down as well, so we brought that down, uh, a percentage, twenty percent, uh, down to twelve thousand. Um, our travel and expense has increased just with costs as they go to send people to training to keep up with their licensing. Uh, so I did increase that, um, a portion. And then our computer software, that's really mainly our, um, MCAPs, the Minnesota County Attorney, uh, Prosecution Services Program that we use as our main database, uh, and then West Law, which is our main, uh, primary research tool. Uh, and that continues to increase over time, uh, so increased that to a, a point. And then I'll just highlight the drug court, uh, money is still there. We didn't yet, or we're getting, uh, the money to drug court for this year, but, uh, we've kept that steady at thirty thousand and appreciate the board's continued support of the drug court program and, and the important things they do. And that's the portion that the county pays, so. That's the revenues and expenditures under the county attorney portion before I move to the next section, which is victim witness. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll, I'll move to victim witness services. Uh, they do have some grant funding, uh, that one piece of, uh, grant funding, the Voca grant. Um, and then there's some miscellaneous court, uh, money that comes in, that's the, uh, revenue portion. Uh, and then the salary piece, then, the thing to highlight there, again, salaries have remained, uh, pretty steady and, and, uh, the same within the, um, within that section. But I am asking for a new request and that new request would be the, uh, funding for our restorative justice position. So that, that position was funded for two years through ARPA funding, uh, and then, uh, a third year through the Public Safety Fund that we've already talked about, but that position was already hired and was there. So that money has been used, uh, through public safety. So now, uh, we're at a point, and I would just point out again, I, I think the program is extremely important, it's extremely effective, um, and it's been a good program for us and getting in the schools has been, uh, very good for us. And so we're looking to continue that, uh, and asking then for that, uh, county contribution. That's Lucas Brandon, uh, that, uh, came and presented, uh, a few weeks ago to the board to just talk through. And I'd been asking them to get the numbers and some of the stuff they'd been doing there in the school. And, and again, we, we feel that the, the cost, uh, effectiveness and, and the cost savings by having that program on the upfront side helps to eliminate juveniles and, and juvenile court at a later point. So we, we do believe it's very effective. And so that's the new request to get that funded and keep that program going. And then beyond that is the rest of the salary for, uh, Michelle and the rest of her team, uh, which again are fairly standard, uh, increase, uh, or they are standard increase COLAs, uh, and would comport with same increase that we regularly see. So that is my budget, uh, if I, any questions from the board?
Questions for Mr. Melton. There's no questions.
All right, thanks for having me.
Thank you. We have our county administrator, Steve Larson, uh, requests for some reclassifications of eleven positions as a report, uh, result of the market study and adjust, uh, existing job descriptions to grade eight or higher.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, this morning's agenda, uh, item really is, we believe will be the potential of, of several different items that will come before this commission for your consideration as a part of this market study. Uh, if you recall back in April of this year, that this board approved, uh, David Drownsen Associates, uh, to, uh, to conduct the market study services. Uh, prior to that process and, and, uh, early on in the process, our, our department heads, uh, worked to update all of their job descriptions. And once they were completed, all those job descriptions were made available to David Drownsen Associates, uh, for evaluation. Again, while our department heads, uh, work ongoing the throughout market, in between market studies and the job descriptions, uh, there are some different things that can often dictate, uh, changes, uh, to that grade of, of the position. One can be, uh, just the market conditions that, uh, that were under the demand for those services. Uh, also the job, this, job duties of those positions can shift, uh, or both of those factors, uh, that can ultimately impact the pay structure. Uh, when David Drownsen Associates, uh, evaluated, uh, the market study initially, the results, there were several positions that fell way below market, uh, that you have listed in your packet, uh, again, uh, the areas that we're focusing on are Technology Service Director, Facilities Director, Fiscal Supervisor, Registered Nurse, uh, Senior Engineering Technicians, Technology Systems Computers, uh, Support Specialists, Facilities Maintenance Technicians, Custodians, Office Support Specialists, Office Associate and Chief Attorneys. Uh, and so, uh, in addition to making, uh, those additions to the roughly sixty-five positions, uh, to get them up to, to closer to market, uh, there's also a benefit in doing so as we move forward with our market study. Uh, as, uh, as, uh, they look at the full impact of the pay structure of our grids, uh, this will, uh, this will adjust that initial findings, uh, David Drownsen Associates. And so, uh, as a part of the recommendation, it'll also be requesting to move, uh, move all positions from grades one through seven, uh, to start at grade eight. Uh, other than, other than maintenance positions, uh, that are currently at grade five, uh, there are only, uh, three full-time and variable hour positions that would be impacted, uh, by, by, uh, vacating those, those, uh, those grades. Uh, the, the recommendation would be is that we, we keep those grades one through seven there in the event that in the future there were, uh, positions that were, and job descriptions that would dictate pay grades, uh, but that, uh, the shift would be that everything, every position, uh, at least, uh, to, to date would start at, uh, grade eight. Um, employees, uh, if the board were to move forward with this idea, employees moving grades would go to the closest step to their current pay with an hour, without an hourly pay decrease, uh, but essentially, essentially would extend their steps, which would e- e- increase, uh, their lifetime earning potential. The recommendation to move all these positions, uh, in talking with HR, we would look to move, uh, have, uh, August third be the, the, the date. Uh, as, uh, part of, uh, some of the information that we shared, uh, David Drownsen Associate, uh, David Drownsen, Drownsen Associate indicated, uh, initially information from July first, we'd hope to have updated information from them, uh, as of this morning, but unfortunately we don't have that. The estimate, uh, of those sixty-five positions moving, uh, would be a cost of sixty-one thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, which would be covered through fund balance for the remainder of this year and then taken into consideration, uh, in the twenty twenty-five, uh, budget planning. Uh, I would just note that, uh, from our, our last market study was conducted in twenty nineteen, implemented in twenty twenty. Uh, this action is consistent, uh, this request is consistent, uh, in, in which we followed back in as part of that, uh, that study. Uh, and again, I would just, uh, reminder that this would, uh, this would be the potential first steps, uh, in actions for the county commission would consider, uh, as part of this market study. Uh, I think it, it's beneficial and that it gets the, these, these adjustments get, uh, these positions closer to market, which also impacts, uh, the overall grid, uh, as David Drownsen Associates considers, uh, different options and recommendations to its board. And with that, I deal with that.
Questions for Steve?
I, I just, I want to just have a little clarification here, just, uh, so, uh, as, same with the last market study, there were, I believe in the last market study, there were about eighteen positions that were really fell far outside of the, um, parameters. And so we adjusted those immediately and then we did, we took care of the rest later.
That is.
Similar, that's what we're doing now, instead of eighteen positions, there's eleven positions. But in your, in your comment, I, you know, I, I think it, it says here, and adjust all existing job descriptions to grade eight or higher. It's, it's, it's within those eleven.
That, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to avoid any confusion there, that, that this isn't all, it, it's for those ones that fell really outside of the scope that, that we wanted to achieve.
That's correct, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, thank you.
Okay, just, I'm sure we have folks watching this and, and just want to make sure that there's no confusion there in what we're doing.
And this was presented, uh, at PEC and, uh, there was a discussion on it. I was not here the last time that, that, uh, these adjustments were made, but there's fewer of them now than there were then. And this is just getting the, the people who fall outside of the norm, um, up to, up to a standard to where we can deal with the whole group in looking at keeping our salaries competitive and employees treated fairly. So I think it's a, it's a worthwhile investment in our people and, and the system for our, uh, HR to keep, keep these, uh, positions at a competitor, a competitive level and not letting anybody fall outside the parameters. Any other questions or comments for Steve? Can we get a motion?
Well, I, I, I mean, these, these, these eleven positions fall below the minimums that we've, that, that, and that's just unacceptable.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, so having said that, I would, um, in the first step, process of our, of our total, uh, wage study, the first step involved with that is to follow the same process that we did years ago. And that is to bring those that fell below all minimum standards up to, uh, a, a more reasonable amount. And so I'd move that we reclassify the eleven positions, uh, as, um, as recommended and suggested in our document.
Have a second?
I'll second that, um, once again, restating these positions were noted as, noted as they were below the ninety percent, ninety-four percent mark. So it's very important to state that.
It's also worthwhile notice, uh, we have custodial positions here, some of the, uh, lowest paid employees. But in addition to that, we have some of the people who are the most, uh, we're in competition with private sector for nurses. Um, you know, but for the engineering techs, that's, those were tough spots to fill. Um, our IT people, just, uh, a number of spots in here that we've got to have a competitive salary for just to get them filled. So this is a, a good, uh, a good step towards accomplishing that. Any further comments?
Mr. Chair, I would also, um, included within my motion, if it's okay, that as suggested here, that, that those funds would come out of our county reserves.
Um, I think that's out of my second.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioner Campbell, does your motion include the adjustment of those eight, those positions to grade eight on?
Yes.
Starting August third.
Any other comments? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to committee reports and we will start with Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So going back to last Tuesday, uh, that afternoon, I had the monthly meeting with our, uh, Adult Mental Health, uh, LAC. Um, we had a, um, a couple, uh, positions that need, uh, elections for two positions, uh, that were, uh, the terms had run out. So setting new terms from, for the LAC from, uh, twenty twenty-four to June of twenty-six, and that was for, uh, co-chair. Uh, so we, um, re-na, re-elected Alison Wobek, W- Wobek, excuse me, who's been, um, in this position for a number of years and does a great job. We also had, uh, the terms up and we re-elected Laurie Flores, um, our, our treasurer, and she helps us run the book. So both those positions. Uh, also, uh, we thank the county, uh, for, they received the money of the two thousand dollar allocation to, uh, help do the good work of the LAC. Uh, LAC also had, um, uh, two, two people, um, speaking to Adult Mental Health at the Barnes, at the, uh, county fair. And I thank both Barb and Angela for being part of that. Other than that, it was mainly, uh, agency reports and I think we had, uh, right around nine different agencies that, uh, shared con- comments, uh, in that meeting. So very good meeting and we continue to learn more about each other and our, uh, also we made a, uh, a list of other people that have been in the past part of the LAC or new members, are trying to bring new members in, so making it grow. Um, on the eighteenth, oh, excuse me, one more thing. Uh, on, on the sixteenth, going back Tuesday night, I did, uh, go to the Clay County Planning Meeting as an observer. Um, being familiar with all three of the public hearings, um, I was, uh, pleased with the, for the work done by the commission on Farm in the Dale, how we, um, in their, uh, getting their permits for events, uh, also with the Steenerson Storage Project out by Saban. And then, um, as part of, um, the last hearing, uh, for a home occupation change up in, uh, north of town, I had received, uh, two complaints, uh, from citizens prior to the, uh, this hearing and also, um, one other of a concern, so I wanted to be at the meeting. Um, uh, and I listened to that conversation, uh, it was very difficult, uh, a lot of things were expressed. Uh, and, um, and again, I'll let, uh, Commissioner Mojo get into that detail. Personally, listening to it, I, I understand. Personally, listening to it, I understand the decision and at the same time have empathy for those especially that live within 1,000 feet and would only suggest and hope that the owner of the sawmill, along with the closest neighbors, have talked and can be good neighbors to each other and hopefully this will work out well for both as best they can. On the 17th, I had our Historical and Cultural Society Finance Committee. We did once again, deep dive into the budget for month to month that things are running in a good place with the society, so we move ahead. Also, then on the 18th, Thursday, I had my monthly meeting with the HRA. Main things there, we're going through our buildings. I can report that occupancy, the invictions are becoming less and occupancies are becoming more. So, there's, it's improvement on their budget, improvement on their budget, also from the money that we, through our levy, and also money through grants that the HRA received last year. The work has been completed up in Eulyn on the new roof, also Hoagie Estates in Delworth. There's already continuing work being done internally and security improvements to that building. We did, what was like, oh, and then also dollars are going out as was projected to help people to stay in their homes and do their, and do improvements to their property. So, all good work is being done. We will be meeting this afternoon for a little bit, talk about their potential levy that they will be talking to us about when we meet on August 13th. So, we'll be getting updates from them at that time. Also, later in the afternoon on the 18th, the West Central Economic Development District Board met. It was down in Fergus Falls. Because of other meetings, I attended virtually. Main things there were nominations for second terms, so myself, a new term for the next three years, along with for Clay County. Otter Tail was Kurt Mortensen, three-year appointment, and then two others, Travis County, Chad Metz, and City of Alexandria, Scott Allen, all were reappointed for another three-year term. With that, the Economic Development Group, there is one open position still there where we need a township officer. So, if anybody has anybody in mind that might be good for that, let me know, who a good township offer may be interested. And again, this is for economic development. It'd be nice to see some loans go toward Clay County. And so, I just throw that out there. I know we're all connected to some of our townships, so. And then we had new officer elections. Chair was currently Deb White from Moorhead. Her term is ending. Kurt Mortensen from Otter Tail was the new chair, or running as new chair, and Paul Kravenoff is now the vice chair. So, anyway, happy to help the group. We had a good presentation from staff member Greg Wyler on the revolving fund that the WCI works with, and he did a good job about having these funds for businesses starting out in our region. And then, I found this one very interesting. We had a presentation giving background to the WCI, what its past was present, what the future may look like. It was given by Neil Culbreath, and sharing perspectives of and how the whole formation that became about, all being started by the William McKnight, who owned and started up 3M Company. So, this foundation started 70 years ago in 1954, and then they broke into regions and now it's involved into the regions that we have at the state. So, anyway, and at the end of the meeting, those that were there in Fergus Falls had a fish fry. That's where that one was. Then that evening, we had our monthly board meeting for Lakewood Prairie CAP LP. And anyway, the main things there, I just, we had a very nice spotlight by Becky Johnson, talking about her work in learning and development throughout the organization. Some of the applications for approvals that I just might mention real quick was a HUD grant for housing services of $114,000. Let's see, 200 grant deed from deed for $200,000, and one of my favorites, a grant for volunteer taxpayer assistance of 75 grand, and then another grant from the state, housing building capacity for buildings, or housing, I'm sorry, housing capacity building grant of 200 grand. So, that was, they're moving in a good direction. So, Commissioner Mojo was in attendance, she can fill in some gaps. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I attended the Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday, as was recapped by Commissioner Kravenoff. Again, those applications were approved. There was substantial public input. I'm hopeful that we were able to mitigate the concerns of the residents throughout the conditions that were placed on the settlement IUP, particularly since the exact same facility was in operation in a very busy part of Moorhead. So, hopeful that that can go through. It was identified during that testimony that particularly some additional training might be helpful for board members as we, on proper protocol for open meetings and taking testimony. And so, our planning director is going to be working with Commissioner Bear on that, Planning Commissioner Bear on that, as we, he's the chair of that as we move forward. So, I thought a good opportunity to address those concerns. I attended the MetroCog committee meeting last week. It was a little tricky to get a quorum, which seems to be the trend lately with a lot of meetings this summer. And I'll say, for folks that serve on committees, particularly during the summer, that's really hard for staff to not have the ability to officially move forward on agendas. There's so much staff work and preparation that goes into those meetings. So, just please, please, if you say you're going to attend a meeting, attend those meetings. We did get enough to do a quorum briefly towards the end, so we did approve the Amendment Nine of the tip. We approved the 2025-2028 tip, and then the West 94 Transportation Plan, as recapped by the folks from MetroCog that were here. There's a lot of great studies going on right now. Funding is tricky, and if you have the ability to get federal or state funding, there is a requirement for that 20%, local match, and because so many different entities are there at MetroCog, that does maybe shift how local municipalities will put money in for one year over the next. So, I appreciate Steve reaching out to me whenever there's maybe a concern on that. Certainly, we've got enough staff, part of that dialogue, that I'm hopeful we can piecemeal that together. And, you know, it's not a huge amount of money usually that's reallocated, as noted today, but again, to leverage those funds, I appreciate everyone's flexibility. I attended the CAP LP meeting that, again, didn't get a quorum until late on, and that's not fair for staff. We did complete the Roma Training, which is vitally important for those federal dollars, and staff does a really great job of updating us on all of the good work. I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Center Board meeting. I alluded to the jail practitioner moving away, so they're currently recruiting for that position. It will be tricky, but they are committed to that. The Moorhead Building Project, that clinic will be open, well, it's still open, but the full project will be wrapped up mid-September, late October. They're sitting at, of the $500,000 contingency that was there, they've utilized 420, so they're still under. Hopeful they can complete that completely under, and I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On July 18th, we had our West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting, and I touched on a couple of those items while we had James and Josh here this morning. We did, we also did receive a report on the latest inspection, and that was, I think James referred to it as probably the cleanest inspection report that that facility's had. So, again, it just goes to show that the good work that they're doing over there. We did review the 2024 budget to date. There's no real surprises there at this point in time. We did talk about the healthcare contract ending in June of 2025. We did, of course, the July meeting is also the meeting that we established the next year's budget. So, the proposed budget for 2025 was presented and ultimately approved. And then we, as part of that process, we also reviewed other facilities, non-member rates that they have for what they charge for non-members. And with that in mind, our current, the 2024 rate that we had for our facility was $350 a day. That we had recommended, and that's going to go to $375 a day, and we'll be very competitive with the other entities around the state. And then, and then we did, then we did have the discussion regarding the body-worn cameras and the recommendation that was, this board acted on today. The other meeting I had then was the Friday, the 19th, we had a diversion authority work group workshop, and the primary focus on that was, we had Dr. Jeff Schatz was there again, who helped us originally design our policy, governance and policies. We had an awful lot of, you know, based on what had currently happened in the past year, we had an awful lot of discussions regarding the governance and those policies and how we should be monitoring those moving forward. And there was an awful lot of good discussion and I think a lot of agreement on, obviously there were some areas where things fell through the cracks because maybe there wasn't the proper protocol or knowledge of who should be doing what. So, I think that's going to be really cleaned up moving forward. And I thought it was a very good meeting, and I always think Dr. Schatz does a great job in what he does, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. On the 18th, I attended the West Central Regional Juvenile Center meeting that Commissioner Campbell reported on. He did a pretty comprehensive report. I just want to add, it is very gratifying when we have people come into other partners from other counties and hear their glowing appraisals of what our staff is doing in this county. And as a result, I think some of the things we're moving into that are going to be in a response to state law changes and in response to our community needs, our need to get a residential facility, psychiatric facility for these young people in here. There's a lot of interest in supporting us in that and in continuing the partnership in those areas. So, I'm just very optimistic on that. I also attended the 19th, the diversion authority workshop that we had with Dr. Schatz. I had one concern that I think was addressed, and there's been some things where we, as a board, probably lacked in awareness that we should have. And I think collectively, the group owns that. And there is, Dr. Schatz, two years ago, helped us put together a governance model, and I think there was an assumption that some of these functions that that governance model directed towards the board would be identified and acted on, and it was just never identified where that was going to take place. And we spent a little over three hours, and I think some good introspection and some good planning took place for us to move forward on that. So, all in all, it was a good meeting, and that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 16th, I participated in Regional City-City County Administrator Group. We spent a significant portion of the meeting talking about cannabis, ordinance implementation, shared with them this board's actions as previously taken. We also talked on some economic development issues in their communities. On the 17th, I had county management. We received a technology update from Rory. We again covered more updates from Budget 2025. We talked about, we're starting to, over the last year, starting to see some additional record requests from different entities and individuals. We reminded our department heads what our county policy is and how that procedure should look like. We also heard some updates from Human Resources. Thursday and Friday, I participated in the MACA Technical Days. I appreciate the board's willingness to send me to opportunities like this. We talked about, there was a spring technical days that I didn't participate in. They talked about workforce shortage of part two of that discussion. A lot of the different things this board has taken action on to try to draw interest in both recruiting and retaining. The afternoon, we heard from the Federal Reserve Bank in Minneapolis. They talked about economic conditions in Minnesota and also labor force issues. Just some of the highlights, I think that, not surprisingly, we've seen some housing permit dips in the state of Minnesota, but the construction for commercial has been increasing, and the competitive nature of bids has been much better over the last year. Job growth continues to be excellent. I think that's important. We've heard different conferences in the past, people say people are sitting at home not working. We're, again, continue to be at pre-pandemic numbers above hiring. Again, we're seeing more bursts, or fewer bursts, more deaths, more baby boomers that are entering into retirement. We talked a lot about the importance of that immigration is going to play into filling our jobs in Minnesota, because just having people transition from other states is not going to fill that. This is an example, just here in the Fargo-Moorhead area, the unemployment rate right now is 1.9%. And so, pretty tough to find that quality employees with a competition like that. Talked about some AI issues, NACO and AMC have been putting this as one of their priority areas of study. We heard some, heard from different states, Tennessee, Phoenix, Kansas City, and North Carolina, of kind of some different ways that they're using AI to better serve the public. We had a lengthy discussion about the Office of Cannabis Management. We had their Government Relations Director there, you know, of interest, as I mentioned earlier. We had about 48 different people that responded to AMC's survey. We're the only county that's actually brought forward an ordinance, an adjustment that you've adopted. And so, again, kudos to this board and kudos to our staff that brought that forward. We also talked about mental health, different examples of programs that are in Anoka County and Moore County, and then also we heard a presentation from the Pope County Administrator on some of the challenges that they faced with the loss of their officer, which was about a year ago. And so, again, appreciate the opportunity to be there. Yesterday, talked, had several meetings with our department heads. Wanted to also just kind of piggyback off some of the comments that were made in regard to James and Josh, I've been having correspondence with Representative Keeler. She was able to tour the facility recently, and James and Josh were able to share some of the discussions that this board has had in regards to the PRTF and the potential non-seared attention shift in a priority. And she, again, just wanted to pass along the appreciation for looking forward, being pass along the appreciation for, for looking forward, being flexible, and also trying to meet the mental health needs of our, of our youth. Just wanted to give a brief update. This board recently approved a cybersecurity position. After interviews, they did, they hired Jocelyn Sloan. Jocelyn's been with us for a number of years. She does have a master's degree in cybersecurity. And so looking forward to continuing to have her, her strengths here at the county. Just wanted to note, next week is the fifth Tuesday. We do not have a board meeting, so our next time that we will meet is August 6th. And then just lastly, I want to, want to thank Rory and his IT staff. We were impacted by the CrowdStrike platform update last week. I received a call from Rory well before the start of the day. And by 4:30 in the morning, we had most of our servers back online, and they had to go over about 300 computers to get off the blue screen. And so again, we, we have lots of great examples every day, day to day of the great staff that we have. But just wanted to send out special appreciation to Rory and the staff for, for their hard work. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Jackie, what do you got for us? Anybody got anything? All right, adjourned.